Yeah.
The attendees, several are in attendance. So, okay, Julia, I'd say any time.
Okay, so, good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to call our meeting to order. And our first item is to pledge allegiance, pledge of allegiance, so we could all stand and... So, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great. Thank you. Okay. So, has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes from our last meeting?
Julia, can we start with a moment of silence?
Oh, yes, sorry. Thank you for reminding me.
Sure.
Do you want to lead that for us, please?
Sure. I just want, I think, in the, in the wake of the current situation in the Black Lives Matter movement, and I'm not going to name specific names, obviously, it was, the latest incident was with Mr. Floyd, but I just think we should take a few moments of silence to recognize the Black Lives Matter movement and the lives that have been lost recently.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Kelly.
Yeah.
Okay, so, we had a meeting on May 27th. Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes from that meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Any amendments or changes, or you happy to approve?
Happy to approve on my end.
Okay, great. So, could I have a motion to approve the 8th, 2020, please?
Second.
Right, all in favor, and we'll have to do a roll call. So, Kelly?
Yeah, hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Shannon?
Hi.
Julia?
Hi.
Okay, so, we're all set with that. The next item on the agenda is public comment. We have two times for public comment, or opportunities for public comment during our meetings. The one now, at the beginning of the meeting, and then there'll be one at the very end of the meeting. And we are happy to listen to comments from the public relating to policy, budget, administrative matters, or sharing ideas about how we can improve the Duxbury Public Schools. We're happy for you to share with us your ideas, and we ask that you limit your remarks to two minutes, if you could. And if you would like to join us, I believe, if you go to the bottom of your screen, there's an image called Participants, and you can click on that. And then, there's an opportunity to raise hand, and you click on that, and Dr. Antonucci will see you. And then, we will be happy to listen to your comments.
Julie, can I say one thing?
Of course.
I just wanted to make a comment that we received some letters and information regarding the Mandarin program. And I just wanted to really thank the parents who wrote to us for the tone of all their letters. I mean, they're obviously very passionate, but I was really happy at the level of respect and just really thankful that, like, what great role models for their children and for our town. And one of the letters is actually from a high school freshman, and it was so well-written, and it just was really nice to see.
Great, thank you for that.
Yeah, Kelly, I was just gonna add until you added that, but we got a few letters from students. And one today, late today, actually, from a group of students, it was literally one of the finest letters I have ever received, and it should be a model, and so sometimes kids know best, I guess, you know, but it was, I think, used the right word, it was very thoughtful and respectful. And we'll, we'll obviously get to that discussion, so.
Great. So, John, are there any raised hands coming up on your screen?
Yes, there is. Looks like Mary Lou Buell, and I'm gonna gonna open that. Mary Lou, there she goes.
Yeah.
If you could just unmute yourself.
Yep, I'm unmuted. So, you guys can hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay. So, I'm Mary Lou Buell. I am the parent of a rising senior who is a Mandarin student. But I'm really not struggling with this decision to cut the Mandarin program as a parent. It's more just trying to wrap my brain around the whole district's perspective. And so, I am hoping that tonight some light is shed. I mean, there was a lot of discussion earlier, as you all know, around third-term grades, and do they count towards GPA or not? And there was so much that was made of, like, we cannot do any harm to our students. And, you know, earlier this year, Dr. Antonucci sent out the strategic plan, and there was a lot in there about the vision statement, prioritizing students' social and emotional well-being. And it just strikes me with this letter of non-renewal that destroys our Mandarin program that the district is not being sensitive to how vulnerable our Asian population is feeling right now in the midst of COVID-19, our president running around calling it the Chinese virus, and then Duxbury cuts Mandarin, and our Chinese teacher is out of a job. And I just feel like this is not in alignment with what you say your values are and what we've been hearing all along. And as a resident, as a parent, I am just really struggling to wrap my brain around that decision. And I just hope that you speak to it a little more tonight.
Great, thank you, Mary Lou. Is there anybody else who's on the screen?
Yes, Paige. Hi, Paige.
Hi, this is Paige Nijame, and I am a mom of a rising senior and a rising eighth grader. And I just wanted to make it known that the kids aren't really receiving any instruction from the teachers for the past three months. There's been, you know, there's one teacher that had one Zoom meeting in the seventh grade. The Zoom meetings tend to be, you know, hey, how's everybody doing? They have 24 kids there, and I'm like, okay, good, we're gonna get something taught. And then, they let the kids go after 10 minutes after they check in with them. So, you know, there's not much more I can say. I've been supplementing at home. I've hired tutors. I don't want my kids to fall behind. The private school kids that are actually taking tests, and they're actually, you know, being instructed. And I just was really disappointed in the last three months of, of the, the lack of, you know, the kids learning anything. And I know we were looking at their social, emotional well-being, which is great. I think that's, that's fantastic. But if, if you ask my kids' friends, they're all, they, this is the best thing that's ever happened to them, right? They're on, you know, Fortnite all day, if I don't, if I don't shut the internet off. They just have, they just have had so little to do. And I just hope that over, if, if we have to go back through this, that we can learn from that. I've heard a lot of teachers say that Zoom is not the ideal platform. And so, I run a business, and it's not the ideal platform for my business, but hey, I've gotta do it. So, it's not ideal, but I think that there could have been a better try at it. So, that's all.
Great, thank you very much. Other comments?
Yeah, Kelly, love you, love you, love you a lot, excuse me. Hi, Kelly.
Hello, hi, this is actually Kelly's husband, Norm.
Sorry about that. You come up with her name there.
It's a whole, yes, absolutely. It's a whole family thing. So, yeah, again, thank you.
Excuse me once, I'm sorry. Sorry, I, you're gonna have to start over. I inadvertently muted you. I'm sorry about that.
We will not hold that against you. No problem at all. We're all just trying to get through.
Yes.
So, yeah, so, again, thank you. Thank you for giving us this forum to, to talk. I think it's, it's very important. And, and, you know, for, for me, I guess, what, what, having, having a daughter that's a, that's a rising freshman and a daughter that's a rising senior, you know, clearly, we're heavily involved in what's going on. And, and our freshman daughter, moving into, moving into sophomore year, also is a Mandarin student. And I guess that, that the concern that I have, in, in fully understanding the pressure that, that you, the system is under, and the cuts that have to be made, everybody understands that. Nobody knows what is necessarily going to happen. So, so we do register that. The, what I would point out, though, is that amongst these cuts, I think we just need to be cognizant of the fact that when you cut a teacher, let's say, from a different department, and, you know, I'm just making it up, I'm not, you know, if you, if you cut a teacher from the French department, the French department still exists. If you cut the Mandarin teacher, the Mandarin department is gone. And, and I think that that's a consideration that all of the students from freshmen, but in particular, the, the, the sophomores and the juniors, well, these are, four languages are required. They, they've made this commitment, you have to have two years. Some of these kids aren't going to have the opportunity to switch necessarily. So, you know, I would like to at least just voice that concern and, and the consideration that when these cuts are happening, and I'm sure, I'm sure it's inadvertent, inadvertent, but you may be cutting an entire department when, when you make some of these, you know, some of these decisions. So, I would just like to at least point that out.
Right, fair point. Thank you very much. Anybody else?
That's it for now, Julia.
Okay. I just remind everyone, we have
Oh, Julia, one just popped up.
Oh, good, okay.
Jessica Bettencourt.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Hi. Hi, everyone. I'm Jessica Bettencourt. First of all, I want to thank you all for all your hard work. We realize this organization, as it is for us, as it is for you, this has been a tough few months. We have three kids in the Duxbury Schools, a rising senior, a rising junior, and a rising eighth grader. And, you know, we're, we're all doing the best we can. I'm here specifically about the Mandarin program as well. It only applies to my youngest, but we moved here from Connecticut, where our school system implemented a mandatory Mandarin curriculum in recognition that it is an international language of trade that probably is not going to change. And it's good for the kids to have a working knowledge of a completely different culture. Taylor, that's our youngest, absolutely adored his Mandarin teacher this year, Mr. Saffa. I can't say enough about him. I haven't told him yet what's going on because he's going to be terribly upset. And he's been taking Mandarin for years, and he just loves it. So, that's it. That's our sob story. Just wanted to put in a plug for the Mandarin program. Appreciate all your work, guys. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else with comments?
There is someone here, the Bastin family, it comes up as.
Great, okay.
Okay.
Hi, my name's Liz Bastin. I have a, a rising senior, Franny Bastin. She also is in the Mandarin program. And my, my question mainly, and maybe, maybe you're gonna cover this, because I think Mr. Donovan's letter was very helpful in letting parents know that this is due to a budget shortfall, and that hopefully, things will get corrected at town meeting. But just the process and of understanding what parents can do at the town meeting. Is it just showing up to vote? Is it, you know, petitioning Finance Committee? Just kind of a better understanding of what the process would be to really get funding to help not only the Mandarin program stay in place, but probably other programs that you've also had to cut. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, bear with me a second.
Okay.
Sophia Caslin.
Great. Hi, if you could unmute yourself, then we'll be able to hear you. Great.
Thank you for the technological help. This is Sophia's dad, Mike Caslin, and I wanted to thank John for being so responsive to a couple emails that I had sent over the last few days regarding the Mandarin program. Sophia's a rising senior, and I share the same concerns as the others, that we have the entire department at stake. We also have two teachers that may now be looking for other jobs that even if the program's reinstated, we may lose them to other school districts. And they are both, from what I hear, spectacular. I just hope there's something we can do, and I would love to do whatever I can. If, if any ideas can be shared during this meeting or afterwards, we in the community would like to try and do what we can to help the situation. That's it.
Great, thank you very much. I think that we will, when we have a clearer view, or as we have a clearer view from the town, we will have more information for the community. But right at the moment, we are, we're needing some more information from the town and the Finance Committee before we can understand what the school department's situation is. But we really appreciate your offers of support, and we will, when things clarify, be able to, to be kind of, inform you better about what's needed.
It's coming up as Kathy Schneider.
Great. Hi, Kathy.
Kathy's husband, Tim. I just wanted to speak out in, in support of the Mandarin program as well. And just quickly point out that Mandarin is spoken by twice as many people around the world than Spanish. It's spoken by four times as many people around the world. Almost uncountable how many times more spoken it is than Latin. So, you know, again, Mandarin has been great for our children. Hate to see the town cancel an entire department of the second most spoken language. It just doesn't really make a lot of sense to me. But thanks for everyone's time.
Great, thank you very much.
One more, a couple, a few more. Mike, Mike McGee. Mike, you there?
If you can unmute yourself. Yeah, there you go.
Good evening, and thank you. I have a kid at the Chandler School, is going into first grade. And I have another one in the preschool at Magic Dragon. And I just, I'll start with the Magic Dragon end of it, where there's potential for cuts at us, that Magic Dragon be considered as something that's not necessarily essential, but very, very important to this town. Particularly where the, when that nanny case came down this year, there's a waitlist for Magic Dragon and other daycares. It's not just something where the children will be just fine going home. There's a lot of working parents in this town. They need that. It's just, it's not just space for potentially spacing out the first graders and kindergartners. It, it's, it's something that's very important, and our families invested a lot of it and enjoyed it. And, and the staff is great there, and our kindergartner was very ready for kindergarten. And I'll just quickly state my opposition to any kind of part-time school, coming from a family of two working parents. We really need that to get back to working full-time without children at our feet. So, I'll leave it at that, and thank you very much for your hard work. I'm sure you guys aren't getting much sleep.
Thank you very much for that.
Thanks, Mike. Maddie King. Let me just, there we go.
Hello, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Maddie King. I'm a rising senior at DHS, and I'm a part of the Mandarin program. As previously stated by all the other, like, comments today, I would just like to reinstate the fact that I think it would be a real loss to our school system to lose Jing La Shu, as we call her, or Mrs. Jing. She's such a wonderful teacher to us, and her being the entirety of the Mandarin High School program. We have that one teacher for encompassing all four years for the high school. We would love to have her back next year, and she relayed this news to us this week on our last Zoom. And it was so heartbreaking to hear her talk about this and how she might not be coming back. I'm worried that the fact that her contract is not being renewed, that she could go off to another school district. Because right now, she doesn't have a job lined up for next year, so she probably would be looking at other job offers. I think, again, just to reinstate, I think it'd be a real loss for her to leave our school systems, and I would just like to have that out there. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Maddie.
Maddie. It's gonna be one sec here. Next up is, it's just, it's just labeled as Christina.
Yeah.
Hi, yes, this is Christina Ku. My, I have a rising senior and a rising freshman in the Mandarin program. We have been trying to get to learn Mandarin for quite a long time now, before the school offered it in the past. I don't speak Mandarin myself. I certainly do regret it, being in the business world. It's something that I would have benefited from with my company's business over in China. However, over the past years, before Duxbury offered the Mandarin program, we were driving to Quincy every weekend to take Mandarin classes. And then, we had to take, and then there was a class offered in the basement of one of the churches in Duxbury, where we also then went to, to take classes. So, when the class is offered here in Duxbury, we are really happy. So, I'm really concerned, especially for my middle school eighth grader, who will be entering high school next year, because I'm not sure what we will do. Amanda doesn't want to Quincy.
Yeah, um, hi, I'm sorry. My name is Jayden. I'm the rising senior. I take Mandarin, and one of the reasons we're mostly concerned is the language requirement. A lot of colleges like to see people take four years of a language, and when someone drops it before their senior year, it sends a really big message. Even if the school doesn't offer it, the colleges won't really see that. But even, even though we have met the requirement, we have taken three years in high school. The sophomores, the rising juniors, have taken two, and if they can't take the language next year, then I'm just really concerned for them as well. I know a lot of sophomores, or I guess, rising juniors. And also, my sister, again, is in eighth grade, a rising freshman. And I, if I was in her place, I would not be looking forward to switching my language. We have been taking Mandarin for years, years outside of the school district, and it was really terrible.
And I know that you are aware of this already, that it is really difficult to find good Mandarin teachers. And we have really two very excellent teachers that we would love to make sure that they feel comfortable that they are gonna be continuing.
And Zhang La Shu and Mr. Saffa, Su Tu La Shu, I think is what Jillian calls him, is our one, are some of the best Mandarin teachers we've had. And we've had three different teachers in the past three years. They've made it a really memorable experience this year. And because it's such a small department, we're all just really close. We all help each other. Mr. Saffa will come in sometimes during his prep blocks and answer our questions, have conversations with us. And we'll be really sad to see either of them go.
Thank you for a chance to speak here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your input.
Philip Riordan.
Okay, great.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, first of all, thank you very much for taking the time and putting in all the effort. I'm sure this has been a tremendous amount of work for all of you, so I appreciate all your efforts. I'm the father of a rising sixth grader, rising fifth grader, and rising third grader, and would like you to specifically comment on not only the plans for the coming year, as you have had them so far. I realize the official guidelines from the Back-to-School Working Group of the DESE has not come out, but I believe enough information was put, put out on the Guidance on Required Safety Supplies as of June 5th from that group to at least make an educated guess, especially around the restrictions concerning 10 students per classroom. So, I'd really like some guidance on that, and as well as what you believe your ability to vary from those guidelines would be. In your letter, it seemed like there wasn't gonna be much ability to do that, but I believe that's something that really needs to be looked at most carefully. Specifically, just recently, the, the chapter president of the American Academy of Pediatrics said the reopening guidelines for school districts should be based on the best available evidence with flexibility for local conditions. No two schools are exactly the same, and there are important geographic variations. I believe very strongly in that. I've sent letters to the governor, lieutenant governor, state reps, state senator, as well as the Return to School Working Group in regards to my feelings on that. So, I just wanted, before I had communicated with you, I wanted to get your feedback in this meeting on exactly where you feel you are at this point, what you think you're gonna be able to do in regards to deviating from those guidelines, and then, just also, just to express my appreciation for all the work you're doing. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. I think we'll cover some, quite a lot of that in our meeting. Am I right?
Probably not. So, let me, let me answer very quickly.
Sure.
Mr. Riordan, I'm not gonna have probably a satisfying answer for you, but let me address two things. The first is about the state guidance, which is not, has not been released. And honestly, so we honestly don't really have a great sense of what that's gonna look like. But in regards to the 10 students per class, that, that was sort of embedded in a, in a, in a set of guidance about PPE. And I can assure you that it caused great anxiety around the, around the state. And what I have been told, point-blank, is that I should not read anything into that, 10 students per class. It's hard not to read into it when it's on a piece of paper. But I, my gut and my sort of, based on a conversation I had at the state level, I, I don't believe that's gonna, that's gonna stand. And that's good news. So, that's what I can say about that. In regards to whether, you know, how much discretion we're gonna have, sort of arbitrary, but, you know, in a couple of conference calls, and my colleagues on this webinar were on it as well, the way they framed it is that it's going to be 85 to 90% prescriptive, and that we'll have discretion, you know, for the other 10 or 15%. But things like class size guidelines and mask wearing and that type of thing, I don't believe we're gonna have a lot of choice on. So, we'll have to kind of just wait and see. But the one thing I would not worry about right now is a 10 students per class. It could be proven wrong when the guidance comes out, but we've been told not to read into that, that that was not the, wasn't the intent to put any restrictions on. So, that's what I know tonight.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riordan.
Is there anybody else who's on?
Yeah, we do. It's just listed as Kildea.
Okay, great. When you're ready to speak, if you can unmute yourself, then we'd be able to hear you.
Hello?
Hello.
I'm gonna go on to the next person here. Luba Gilpatrick.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, I don't want to take up a ton of your time. I know you probably have a lot more people after me. But my daughter is a rising first grader at Chandler. First, I want to say that my experience with the last part of kindergarten is that her teacher was really trying. The specials teachers were really trying. It was great having that once a week with the special. It was great having that once a week with the specials teachers and we had twice weekly Zoom meetings. I can't though even imagine what it would have been like if I had an older kid with both of us trying to work full time while the, the kids were home. So that being said, I just want to add my hope that in September, we would be able to send the children back full time. I know that, Dr. Antunusi, it's not really up to you, but you know, if, if, if you guys had any way can send the bad signal up that working parents, it's, it's, it's just, it's, it's difficult. And it's, it's been very challenging for, for a lot of us. And it, it's very hard to call what happened in the past three months work. So it, it, it's, it's good to see that the, the numbers, I look at them every day, are looking better in the state and hopefully the guidance that you're going to get from, from, from the governing body will, will be better than what it looks like. I know you said that they're telling you that the 10 students is, is, is looking like that's, that, that might look better. So that's good to hear, but just adding my voice to the, please open the schools back up.
Thank you. I would just say there's a tremendous amount of advocacy happening right now around the state. And I can assure you that there, there are many people, including me, who is very anxious to, to get back to business. So thank you for that. Alexis Bridget.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. I have a rising sophomore, eighth grader and fourth grader. I, a lot of people have already expressed some of the things that I would share, so I'll, I'll spare you all of that. My question is, I know, I think something I said, said that there were 20 cuts made on Monday. Mandarin obviously being one of them, but I didn't hear anything about the others. And I know you probably can't share details. I'm only wondering if, like so many other towns in Massachusetts have cut music art in gym, if any of those will be impacted in Duxbury or were impacted in Duxbury. And thank you also for all your hard work.
We are going to be making a presentation on the budget and I think it might be the first agenda item. So if you can stay tuned and listen through that, we'll share some details of the cuts, but we are not making any across the board cuts to our special program, special programs.
So we'll. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I hope you hang in there and you can, to see the rest.
Yeah, I definitely will.
Thanks. Shane Festa.
Okay. Shit, okay, great.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, now we can.
All right. Hi, my name is Shane Festa. I want to start off and saying thank you all so much for all your hard work. This school year has been, oh, I'm a student by the way, at Duxbury High School. Let's probably get that out of the way first, that wasn't blatantly obvious. I just wanted to bring my perspective to the table as a Mandarin student who has been taking the language since sixth grade. I feel as though that the threat of the Mandarin department not coming back to Duxbury High School is at a huge like detriment to all the students who take the language and experience with the cultural diversity here in our small town. And part of taking Mandarin is like growing close with the, with the group, learning about like new perspectives and bonding with your teachers. And I was also wondering, similarly to the last person who spoke, of what positions and like what departments have been impacted and kind of more leaning towards why, from all we know, is it just Mandarin so far that we know of? That's, that's basically it. Thank you so much for hearing me out.
Great, thank you, Shane. I think Dr. Antunusi said he's going to be going through the budget update during the first part of the meeting, so if you can stick with us, we'll, you'll perhaps have some more information to answer your questions.
I see, I see Sophia Castlin again, and maybe it's Mr. Castlin, but I, it might be that I just didn't lower his hand. Let me just double check.
Hi.
It is.
Sorry about that. Yeah, my dad kind of said his piece, but I just wanted to add one more thing.
Good, good. Just, just tell it is Sophia.
Yeah. Thank you. So I've heard a lot of people talk about Mandarin Department, Department, and I'm hearing a lot of things that I agree with, but I think that no one has really brought up the issue of AP online Mandarin next year, which is something that I'm really concerned about. Especially because after six years of taking this language, I know that it was a huge, huge accomplishment to finally find out, at least for my class at least, that the school is finally offering an AP, an AP class next year. And obviously, an online course is also supposed to be available, but just for me at least, and I'm sure some other kids feel the same way, not having an actual teacher to teach you the course and then take an AP exam is just a really, really harder option, especially when it costs hundreds of dollars and will probably count as an independent study class. And I just wanted to make sure that the administration really takes that to heart and keeps it in mind for all the kids that are finally going to be able to take AP Mandarin and are worried because I'm really, really worried about that. Thank you.
Thanks, Sophia. So I'm going to go back to the last, I'm going back to Kildaya again, just to see if.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming back to me. I appreciate it. My name is, my name is Diane Kilday. I have three little ones. I have a rising third grader, a rising first grader and one that will enter in 2021. I am very concerned about the special ed department. I have children on IEPs that have one-to-one instruction that I understand and I appreciate.
Sorry, Mrs. Kilday, I think you're breaking up, so we're not getting everything that you're saying.
I'm sorry, I'm on the phone and I'm outside.
Okay.
You're back now.
Okay, I will not move, thank you. So I'm concerned about summer services and I'm concerned about how these services are going to look in the fall because there is a reason why these children are vulnerable and need one-to-one services. And remotely, they have not been provided. And we need to think about how they are going to be provided in the summer and in the fall. And we already have some guidance, so I want to hear how that's going to be implemented, if the students are going to be in the school for summer school.
Okay, I think we've going to have some discussion about summer programs later with Dr. Klingeman, am I right? So that may answer some of your questions.
If not, well, we can answer of Mrs. Tucker answer.
Okay.
Different form.
Great.
Thank you very much. That's it, Julia, I think we should hit the agenda.
Okay, well, thank you everybody for your comments. And as I said before, there's another opportunity for public comment at the end of our meeting. So if something comes up that you would like to speak on, please return to us at that point. So now we have reports for the committee from the superintendent, so Dr. Antunusi.
Yeah, so I'm going to be doing a lot of talking in a little bit on the agenda, but I just want to say one thing. I don't think she's on the call, but I just do want to, this is my last chance at a school community meeting to recognize for the last time, Mrs. Whitaker, Karen Whitaker, retiring as principal of the Alden School at the, at the end of this month. And I just say what I said before, but Karen is an incredible principal, she's a great colleague, she's a great leader, a great friend, and so we're all going to miss her. And I just would like to sort of publicly acknowledge her for the last time and you know, just thank her for everything she's done for the Duxbury community, the Alden School, and very importantly, the, the students, the students here in Duxbury. She, she's just an amazing person and we're all going to miss her quite a bit. So kudos to, to Mrs. Whitaker. We're gonna miss her.
Yes, very much so. Thank you.
That's it for me. You'll hear it from me in a minute.
Okay, yeah, okay. Dr. Klingeman, do you have comments?
I do have a couple of brief announcements because I too have some agenda items that I'll be speaking to later. I just wanted to acknowledge our schools have been working really hard to put some special events together for the students and families, such as the Chandler and Alden parades today and as well as the other events that have taken place for the seniors. But I wanted to share with you an excellent event that took place at Alden School yesterday. And I'd like to give a shout out to Rita Marie Benoit, who's the curriculum supervisor for Alden School, and Katie Donovan, who's one of the reading specialists for planning a book tasting. And this was an event where students were able to sign up and they were going to be able to share a book that they recently read and enjoyed and be prepared to talk about the title, the author and a brief summary without giving out the plot and any spoilers. And then the students all attended their grade level Zoom meeting, ready to share their book and they had forms where the kids could write down the titles that their classmates shared. But the best part was that the students were able to have their Zoom meeting facilitated by next year's teachers. So we had a lot of teacher volunteers, so the Chandler School second graders had a different group of third grade teachers from Alden School that we're facilitating as well as a lot of Alden teachers. And then we had grade six teachers from DMS facilitating the fifth grade book tasting sessions. So the students did a wonderful job describing the books they read and they got lots of great ideas. And we, we think this is an event that we'd like to continue, even if we are not in a state of closure next year because it worked out really well. And also Caroline Mullins, who is from DMS, she's a seventh grade critical reading teacher, recently asked her students to reflect on how they have improved as students over the past few months of remote learning. And so in today's meeting folder, I included the document, but I wanted to share just a few brief comments from some of the seventh grade students. I know this has been a challenging time, but there have been some positives. And so some of the seventh graders shared that they have learned to ask for help more because in school I was always determined to do everything by myself, to not procrastinate, that doing a lot of work at one time is not as good as balancing it throughout the week. They have a newfound respect for how dedicated teachers are to helping students. They learned how to create their own learning environment. And one more was to be able to adjust quickly to new formats and succeed in that format. So it was nice to see some of the reflections from the seventh grader. Like they have all listed in there. That's all for me for now, thank you.
Thank you very much. So, okay, Mrs. Blake, have you got some information for us?
Yes, just a few quick updates for tonight. So for tonight, I just wanted to provide you all with an update on the fiscal year 20 budget. And so the end of year surplus for fiscal year 20 that we will be projecting to turn back to the town as of June 30th is a current balance of $262,509. And so this number will of course continue to fluctuate in the next several weeks as we continue to process invoices and our, and adjust our outstanding payments due to our vendors. And I also just wanted to, to mention that a portion of the savings is reflective of us finalizing payment details with our, our yellow bus transportation providers. So I had mentioned that in some of the past school committee meetings. So we finally were able to come to a, an agreement with our provider and the agreement included that we would be paying 30% of our outstanding costs in order to ensure continuity of services with transportation for the upcoming school year. And, and then the last brief update that I had for tonight, we're just in the process of finishing up the sale of our surplus student laptop. So if you all remember during the January 15th school committee meeting, those laptops were declared surplus. And so the auction on the, the laptops just wrapped up yesterday and the total sale price was $145,200. And so we're, we're hoping to finalize that process next week and be able to return a check to the town in that amount.
Great.
For tonight.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Okay. And we don't have our student rep, do we? So the, my comments I sent around earlier today, and I'm sorry I didn't send it before, but the Massachusetts Association of School Committees has drafted two resolutions. One relating to school district expenditures as a result of COVID-19. And it, and basically resolving that the state issues funding as well as mandates or, or funding to support the mandates that it comes up with relating to reopening schools in, in September. So if you could have a look at that, please. And then there's a second resolution relating to anti-racism and resolving that school districts work to eradicate any racist practices and to ensure diversity and equity and inclusion. So these seem like pretty solid and relevant resolutions for, for us to consider. So I hope that you'll have, you'll read through and perhaps we could, if you have any changes you'd like to make to the MASC wording, let me know if you think you'd like us to, to have these resolutions, then we can do so at our next meeting and read them into the record and then send them forward to our state reps and to the, the governor. So anyway, please have a look at those. And I think that's everything from me.
Julia, can I give one shout out?
Of course.
Marion Lyden, the art teacher at the high school, I think the classes, sophomores and juniors, did a drive-through art show at the Art Complex Museum. And the students did these amazing self-portraits and the title was COVID. So they painted like whatever mask. They were really incredible and she put them on big posts and you could drive through the Art Complex Museum and around. I don't know if folks had a chance to see it, but it was just such a great outdoor display of art. And I know she's working on like hashtag ducks art and kids put stuff in their yards and then tag it. I'm one of those dinosaurs who doesn't use Instagram, but that's where you can find the artwork. So I just wanted to give a shout out for that, that art program and what she did with the show. And she's having kids send separate self-portraits to Syria for an exchange program and Syrian students sent theirs here. It's just, it's just some really great stuff that's going on and fits well into our program. Thanks.
Great, thank you for that.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, are we?
No, go ahead, please.
Well, I was gonna say, I wanted to just preface, you know, the discussion as we move into the agenda with some kind of high level budget town governance comments, would that be okay? I'll make them fairly brief.
Sure.
Okay, so you know, we have 106 people participating in this meeting and this is my sixth year of service on the school committee. I don't think we've ever had more than 25 at any given school committee meeting. So I want to say, first off, it is important that out of a crisis that we're discussing tonight, we galvanize interest and advocacy for the schools. Mary Lou, it's nice to hear your voice. I served with Mary Lou on the school committee when, when I started. But I'd just like to say, just to be clear, the budget for the schools is made by you. Not, it's made by your neighbors and friends in our community. It's all made by the finance committee, it's all made by the selectmen. Our governance, our system of governments, governance means that the town meeting establishes the budget, which is approved for the schools. Duxbury, for 10 years that I've been closely engaged with the school committee, we've had two superintendents that we've had two superintendents that I just back of the envelope combined had 50 years of public education experience. Both have said for 10 years, the cost of inflation for operating a a high-quality school district is between 3 and 4% per year. The average rate of increase of our spending in the Duxbury Public Schools for the last 10 years has been 2.6%. The budget, which was preliminary, obviously, the budget is out the window. The preliminary fiscal 2021 budget was an increase of less than 2%. Duxbury is one of the top 10% most affluent communities in the Commonwealth. We're in the bottom 20%. I think it's outrageous. We are number 250 out of 350 communities in the Commonwealth in per student spending. It's outrageous. When we've had 10 years of 2.6% increase in our budget and we've had 3 to 4% increase in our cost, any of you that are in the finance world can know what the compound effect is of that shortfall. We don't have room. So when the town says to us beyond a budget, which was again substantially below that was required to maintain services, a cut up between 500,000 and 1.2 million was required. If that doesn't galvanize interest in our community and advocacy on behalf of the public schools, I don't know, you know, we're putting our administrators and our teachers that are so dedicated. And we talk about being committed to education. We have the resources. Are we going to continue to allow the school to be funded in the bottom 20% of the state? So this is really a call to action. I'm very disappointed about Mandarin. I'm disappointed about every tough decision that the school is being asked to make. Everyone needs to step up and get engaged at town meeting. On average, there are about 300 people that participate in town meeting. There are 15,000 residents of Duxbury. If you care, you need to get to town meeting and your voice and you can decide what the school budget is. Not anybody else. You can. So that's just a call to action. Don't I want to get off my soapbox, but it's been 10 years that this is something I don't think is consistent with the values in our community. I think the parents want to step up and help and now's your chance. We need to do something about it. This is not acceptable, not good, not consistent with the values of our community. And, you know, here we are. This is the situation we find ourselves. So maybe maybe you could mute me the rest of the meeting. I've been sort of saying this for six years anyhow. But you know, now's the time. If you want to do something about it, you got to show up at town meeting and raise your voices.
Great, thanks, Peter. Words never spoken. Right, Dr. Antonucci, would you like to take us through the budget?
Yeah, I'm going to share my screen here. Spare with me one moment. Okay, y'all have that presentation?
Yeah.
Okay, so Peter, thanks for that preamble. I think it was really important. And it's almost hard to follow that, but I do want to give you an update on what's happening here. I think it'll be of interest to to our participants as well. So I'm just going to go right into it. I think. Okay, so here is where we are. Obviously, you know, we're in the middle of the, you know, economic crisis that was due to the COVID-19 pandemic. You know, if you read the newspaper, we are not alone. I mean, it's just there are there are significant issues all around the country, you know, certainly in the in the Commonwealth and, you know, Duxbury is not going to be immune to, you know, any of those issues. The town of Duxbury is projecting a sort of likely scenario of a two about a $2 million revenue shortfall. Now, you know, bear in mind, it's a projection and, you know, there's some you know, part of me just wants to see, you know, let the dust settle and see what happens. But we do have to move forward as a town. And so this is the likely scenario according according to the town finance director who's looked at this, I think, pretty thoughtfully. But, you know, time will obviously tell. Using a 60%, 40% school-town split, the Duxbury Public Schools' share of that shortfall is in the neighborhood of $1.2 million. In that 60-40 split, they use that number because we account for about 60% of the expenses in town. So here's kind of the good news slash confusing part of this thing. It is very possible, I might classify it as likely, that the town is going to commit about $1.25 million from two separate accounts. One's called free cash, which is effectively leftover money at the end of a fiscal year and something called the stabilization funds to help kind of mitigate the impact. So towns don't like to use free cash or stabilization funds for operating budget purposes because it's one it's effectively one-time revenue. And, you know, we want to make sure that our budgets are sustainable. The stabilization fund, though, just I use this term all the time, but a lot of people refer to it as a rainy day fund. And I make the argument that it's that it's pouring rain right now and that, you know, if a worldwide pandemic and the, you know, worst recession since the Great Depression isn't reason to use a stabilization, then I would say, well, what is? Right? And there's a lot of people who share who share that 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 same thought. If the town, even if the town though commits to using those funds, and I believe there's an appetite to do so, we still are faced with about a $500,000 impact to Duxbury to the Duxbury Public Schools, which is which is significant. And I'll come back to that in a minute. The issue, by the way, I I when I look at on my screen, I want to make sure. Can you see the full presentation? Is anything blocking the presentation?
No, it's good.
Okay, so I'm seeing you. I'm seeing you guys, but I can't tell what the what the public sees. So the decision to use free cash and stabilization is not finalized. And I can share with everybody and the committee knows this, but last week we had a joint meeting with the finance committee, board of selectmen, town manager, town finance director, and this was discussed at length. And I would classify or categorize that conversation as very positive. You know, I think there's real motivation on a lot of people's part to preserve town services and particularly preserve public school budgets. But even if there's consensus around that strategy, it still wouldn't be official until town meeting votes the budget. I just want to go ahead for a second to see if I've listed. No. So town meeting right now is delayed due to the shutdown. It's typically the first Saturday in May, right? First Saturday in May, I think.
In March.
Oh, it's I'm sorry, March, March, yeah.
Yeah, and it's the second, yeah, I think it's the second Saturday in March. It's the usual day.
I missed the everything. So there you go. The so unfortunately, it's delayed, right, because of the shutdown. So it appears that they're going to try to have town meeting at the very beginning of August, shooting for August 1st. It's possible that it could be a week or two later. But that again, you know, that's not our decision, but there is definitely, I think, again, motivation for people to get it done as quickly as possible, but it's not my decision. So so keeping that keeping that as a target, right, so August, our budget might not be official until August, right, which is a really important thing as we move forward in this conversation. So we are we are faced with this huge exercise. How to cut somewhere in the range of 500,000 to 1.2 million dollars for our FY '21 budget, which to Peter's point earlier, was very lean to begin with. It was already a less-than-level service budget. It actually included a reduction of 4.0 FTE. And I would say for the crowd, that actually included a cut of 1.6 FTE out of Spanish and 0.1 out of Latin. So just a cherry pick, just because we're talking about foreign language. I just want you to know, like, that budget, there was the original budget was already really lean and already compromised. So just with that in mind. And so we have these two scenarios, best case of 500,000, worst case up to $2 million. But because of the uncertainty of the situation, we really had no choice but to complete the exercise of reducing our budget by 1.2 million. It simply would have been irresponsible to do any to do anything less. You know, unfortunately, you know, sustainability is a really important word here when we're talking about budget cuts. Things, you know, cuts have to be sustainable because I would say as difficult as FY '21 is going to be, I think FY '22 might be even more difficult. And I'm not sure what's going to happen in the Duxbury Public Schools for the next two, three, four, five years. It's it's very unsettling. And we talk about what keeps you up at night, you know, that keeps me up at night. We, you know, I had a conversation with a parent yesterday about the Mandarin issue. And, you know, ironically, we this committee and this administration has grown the Mandarin program over the last few years to get it to get it so these kids could finish their pathway. You know, and no one, no one wants to dismantle what you've built or dismantle a public school system. We're not, we didn't get in that business for that. So it's really, it's really unsettling. But that being said, you know, if we're forced to make budget cuts, they need to be sustainable. And, and, you know, I like to remind people, you know, no matter what happens in the budget process, we're opening the doors, we're opening the doors come September, right? We have 3,000 kids coming back to school with their, you know, with the needs and requirement to fulfill graduation requirements and a whole host of other things. So we can't, we have to remember that we have a population to serve. I use this example a lot, but, you know, I think people err on the side of wanting to cut supplies, materials, things like that. We need to run the school, right? So we still need instructional supplies. We'll still need textbooks. We still need computers. So unfortunately, you know, the only way to really create truly sustainable budget cuts is to reduce personnel. I think I think I'm stating, you know, something that's obvious, but it's it's really difficult, but it is no other way to do it. So with that target, you know, 1.2 million, we knew personnel was going to be impacted significantly. Unfortunately, and this is going to go back to the timing, the timing part of the conversation, state law obligates us to issue what I say here is reduction in force notices, layoff notices, basically, to staff by June 15th, right? It's the law. So, you know, the budget picture is really fuzzy right now. And I wish we could wait until there's more clarity, but we simply weren't able to do that. We could not leave ourselves in a position come August where we had a $1.2 million gap, but weren't able to make any reductions. Is that does that make sense? Any questions on that point?
I had a question, John. If town meeting is in August, which is still an if, then the school district and they vote to use stabilization funds and free cash, then the school district is in a position to renew the contracts of the people who have received notices. Is that right?
Yeah, we would do it sort of instant recall.
Okay, but there has also been discussion about not having town meeting until later in the autumn. What happens then to those to people who for to whom these reduction in force notices have been given? If town meeting isn't held until, I don't know, September 1st or October, how does the school district issue contracts to people at that point?
You know, it's a really good question. We'd be we'd be rolling the dice. You know, I mean, you could theoretically recall them and reverse the decision, but you'd be rolling the dice that come, you know, come September, October, whenever the budget gets finalized, again, you'd be left, you'd be kind of left holding the bag. I don't know what we'd do in that situation. I think the responsible thing to do would be to to go forward with it with a with a budget reduction plan. I just don't know what I would do come October if someone said you need to cut a million two out of the budget.
Well, the reason the reason I'm asking is that we've heard several of our commenters ask what they could do to support or how they should, what they should be advocating for. And clearly, there are two issues. There's not only the amount of money, but there's the timing of town meeting. Right? Because if we if we don't have to cut all this money or the 1.2 million, then we want to retain the teachers we want to retain. But we've got to do that before they go off and get another job. So the sooner we hold town meeting to confirm what our financial position is as a district, the sooner we can kind of recover at least some of these reduction in force are some of the people who who've received these notices. But the longer we wait for town meeting, the more torturous it becomes, not only for the people who've received the notices, but also for for the district to, if we later want to fill these positions.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so Julia, on that note, I think that something that folks could do is to write to the finance committee and maybe, you know, they're not sure if they want to use that money yet. So if we had a better indication of a commitment prior to town meeting, whether those funds were going to be tapped to help the budget out, like we the meeting from Monday was, we don't know yet. So there hasn't been clarity on that. So I think I just, as a town person, as somebody who wants to get involved, you know, I think finance committee, fiscal advisory, well, fiscal advisory is more capital budget, but the finance committee would be the place to start.
I'll talk about that, the point and a couple of slides, but that's a really good point.
All right.
But 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 Julia's back to Julia's point and where I was. You know, it's very possible that all of these reduction in force notices and the non-renewals aren't going to be necessary, which makes the exercise that much more difficult. It's it's very, very traumatic experience. And a really shot to the culture and climate when you're issuing, you know, non-renewals and layoffs to a lot of people, especially if they're not necessary. And we know there's huge risk. There's some really talented, really talented people who are impacted. And so we're just crossing our fingers that we don't lose these people. And we have this weird gap right now where, you know, it's possible that we might. But so we can talk about that after, but let me let me move on. John, can I just chime in? Sure. Just to reinforce my earlier point, the town has put us in a terrible position, right? We have no flexibility to make these choices as outlined by the legal requirement to give 60 days notice and an inability to spend money before town money, town meeting approves that. So, I mean, it's just, I want everyone who's participating in this call to recognize this is, you know, this is, you know, this is not just a crisis of today's making. This has been building over 10 years. And we're in a we're in a flat-out terrible position. Like you said, John, to send notices to people you ultimately hope and we believe won't be necessary to be laid off, you know, it's just, it's the worst possible thing to do from, as you said, a culture and just a human standpoint. Yeah. So I'm just, I'm sorry you had to do what you've had to do. Yeah, I do, you know, I do want to mention too that I mentioned that meeting we were in last week of the finance committee and board of selectmen. And there's definitely an appetite and I, you know, I'd call it a consensus, right? We talked about that as we wrapped up that meeting. I think there's consensus that now using the free cash and stabilization is the right move, right? It's just we didn't make the actual decision, right? So that's the limbo that we're kind of stuck in, but it was very positive. It's just that we did, since we didn't have that definitive answer, you know, it put us in a it put us in a tough spot. So we'll come back to that.
All the more reason we need to advocate for early town meeting, early August.
Yep, I agree. So here's here's the big picture. So here's, here's the big picture. And I actually want to make this point before I go on here. The, there's a lot of human beings that are impacted by these decisions. And out of respect for their privacy, I'm giving you more high-level information on this slide and I'll speak to that. The Mandarin issue became public because the instructor, who's wonderful, chose to communicate it to her, to her students. And I don't, I don't fault her for that, but it was, what's unfortunate is that that cut really wasn't, the response to that cut wasn't, no one had any context for that, for that cut. I just want you to know that the plan was not to release it to anybody until, until tonight, but here, you know, here we are. So I just, when you don't have context, it just, it makes it all, all the more confusing. So I, that's kind of why there's been a scramble the last couple of days, but, you know, we, just something we had to deal with. So here's the reduction, you know, $1.2 million, 20 different employees impacted, plus we had five positions that are currently unfilled, right? So it's really 20 that we didn't, that we're not filling as part of this, this reduction. So really 25 people who are positioned really that are, that are impacted. Those, those impacts are either a reduction in force. And a reduction in force speaks to a teacher with professional status. So a teacher who's been here for at least, at least four more years. They, that, that is a technicality. They're, they had some protections under the contract, so they, they get a reduction in force notice. And effectively, what that does is give them, gives them a right to their job should at some point in the future the budget picture change or that position, you know, reopens again, okay? So again, it's just a technicality, but that's what we call a RIF, or a reduction in force. Some, some teachers who aren't professional status were non-renewed. Teachers can be non-renewed for a whole host of reasons. So there was a set of teachers who were non-renewed. Again, it's a technicality. And several teachers were offered a job with, with a lesser FTE. An FTE is full-time equivalency, right? So a 1.0 FTE equals a full-time job, basically, right? So, so those are the distinctions, a RIF, a non-renewal, or a renewal at a reduced FTE. So we went to some teachers and said, hey, you know, your job was cut from a full-time job to a half-time job or full-time job to an 80% job, whatever it may be. So when you total all those up, there are reductions of 17.4 FTE. And the breakdown is right there. 7.9 teachers, four instructional assistants, 4.5 in aggregate of library assistants, office assistants, administrative assistants at various departments and schools, and then one technology support position. So, you know, in total, you know, we cut almost, you know, over $850,000 of personnel from the budget. And again, it impacted a lot of people. We also have some, in the category of personnel, but that doesn't necessarily have an FTE associated with it. Things like, you know, handful of co-curricular stipends, really handful of co-curricular stipends and one other small stipend position in the budget. So that totaled over $28,000. We did cut instructional supplies. I think these cuts mostly came from middle school and high school. I'm going to skip to, I'm going to skip down and I'll come back to this teacher turnover. We also are recommending reduced raises for employees who aren't covered by collective bargaining agreements. So employees who are on individual contracts. You know, and this kills me. I mean, these are some of our, you know, best and brightest and people who have worked quite literally, quite literally, seven days a week since March 13th. And, but nonetheless, I think we all need to share the burden of the cuts here. So many of those people will get really just a, probably a nominal raise to help cover the cost of health insurance increases, but nothing beyond that. And then Katie actually and Brian Cherry did a wonderful job in the very exciting world of trash and recycling. But we, we, they went out to bid and we have a new vendor and actually saved the district a significant amount of money. So that actually helped us with this budget reduction exercise that happened in the last month. So that was $60,000. I want to go back to the third to last bullet is teacher turnover savings. This is a gift right now. We, in our budget, in our original budget, we budget for a certain number of teachers who are going to retire. And we try to capture the difference between someone retiring at a higher salary and then knowing that we're going to bring in, theoretically going to bring in someone at a lower salary to replace the retiree. Well, we had more teachers retire than we had anticipated, so that's real savings. $178,000 sort of, I don't want to call it extra, but it's really extra money since the original budget was developed. That is a godsend, you know, as we're talking about a budget cut exercise like that. So that's, that's where we are, you know? And so it's a big number. And let's just talk about some of the, some of the implications. So, and this is where the context, I think, is important. The budget reductions impacted all four schools. As it says here, they cut across many different departments. The resulting cuts, you know, they'll lead to higher class sizes. You know, we were recommending cuts to classroom teachers, one at the elementary level, which, you know, when you're talking about trade-offs, and again, I don't want to, I don't want to speak to Mandarin, but I know there's a lot of people who are interested. But when you're making these decisions, you're making terrible trade-offs. It's like, do we want to have 24 or 25 kids in a grade three classroom? Or do we want to cut supplies, right? Do we want to cut Mandarin program? And do we want to, you know, save, save another program? Whatever, yeah, all these, all these, again, terrible trade-offs. But there will be higher class sizes in a lot of different places, elementary classes, a lot, a lot of, big hit at the secondary level, particularly at the high school. That's partly because of the way the high school's staffed. It's a little, I don't want to say this the wrong way, it's a little easier to make cuts at the high school when you have multiple teachers in departments. So your cuts are kind of spread across sort of hundreds of kids across many different content areas versus when you cut an elementary teacher, it's a little more concentrated, if that, if that makes sense. But class size will increase. You know, we made cuts to things like library assistants, administrative assistants. These are people who serve our students and serve our public every day. That has a real impact, both a customer service impact and just compromise our ability to, to serve our families. You know, again, we have 3,000 kids coming to the building every day. Now, they bring along with them about 5,000 parents or maybe 4, you know, 4,500 parents. When you, when you walk into the main office and there's no one there to greet you, well, that, that, you know, that has an impact to the operation. So I don't, you can't minimize, can't minimize those types of cuts. You know, sadly, we've worked really hard over the last three years and two years in particular on our strategic plan. I think one of the parents mentioned it in their comments. These cuts impact two of our key strategic plan priorities. We just added finally a computer science teacher at Dexbury High School to enhance a woefully, woefully understaffed computer science department. And also, social emotional learning is one of our key pillars of our strategic plan. In our budget cycle, we made a lot of sacrifices to pay for a new social worker at the middle school. Our kids desperately need it. We're not able to do that in this plan. We're probably not even able to do that in the $500,000 plan. So that has, again, it's a real, it's a real impact. And again, you know, there is one outright program elimination, and that is Mandarin at the high school. We fully recognize that in worst case, should the position not be restored, we know that our kids need a pathway to finish their high school graduation requirements. And we know that they, they need, they need some level of instruction next year and the year after. This decision, and by the way, I should have said this at the very beginning, this is a process, it's a process. Nothing's cast in stone until the ink's dry on the budget, until the school committee votes a budget, until town meeting votes a budget. Nothing is cast in stone. And I love the feedback tonight. I mean, I think it was really, I think it was really important to hear. This decision, just for what it's worth, you know, as we looked at cuts, we looked at minimizing impact to the fewest number of students. And, you know, despite the, the passion for this program by, by many, many students, I think, you know, Mandarin two sign-ups for next year, we had 16 kids, I believe. Mandarin three, I think, was 14. You know, so we, again, in a very brutal conversation about budget reductions, we had to look at, you know, how to minimize impact to the fewest number of students. I'm not saying that's the right decision, right? I mean, I'm the first one to admit, you know, if we made the wrong decision, it might be the wrong decision. But it's, you know, based on all the information we had at the time, we had a lot of brains at the table. This was, this has consumed us for probably the last month. And while it's a surprise to people, it's just, it's just part of, it's just part of a very difficult process. So again, that's sort of the context of all the cuts, but also the context behind Mandarin. I wish the horse hadn't left the barn with that conversation without, you know, it able to present it. But it did, and we're really thrilled that people weighed in. It's actually nice to hear the passion. I will say this, just on a personal level, in my former district, I advocated for years and years to add a Mandarin program in my, in my former district, and we were successful. So I built a Mandarin program, pretty big one actually. And we helped complete the full build of this program over the last, over three years as well. So I can assure you, it was not done capriciously with any, without significant forethought. But, you know, it doesn't make it, it doesn't make the news any easier. Next steps. I, I just think we need to continue our dialogue, and we are every day, in my case at least, with town officials and the board of selectmen and the finance committee. And while there certainly is an appetite, I believe, for the use of free cash and stabilization, I think we need to keep our foot on the gas and continue to advocate for that. Again, I'm very, very optimistic that that is going to be the strategy. But I'd, I'd love, I'd love a definite answer sooner rather than later. I know I'm official notice of this meeting yet, but when we left that public meeting last week, that joint meeting, they did refer to a June 25th, a big June 25th budget meeting. And I think the hope is that by June 25th, we'll at least have a clear sense of what the, what the budget strategy is. However, even if we get some clarity, then, you know, we really cannot take any action, back to my point earlier, until town meeting. And again, that's likely not to be until early August. What we can do, again, on the human level is, you know, if we get some clarity next week, or is it June 25th next week? I guess it is. You know, we can, we can have conversations with our staff and convey to them, you know, what the plan at town meeting is going to be. And I'll say that, you know, if that's going to be the case, we need to get people out to vote at town meeting. Because things, you know, things could always change depending on who shows up. So that's, that's really where we are. It's horrible, you know, it's a distressing conversation. You know, no one takes these jobs to dismantle public education systems. It's kind of sickening. But, you know, it's where we are today, you know, based on that kind of worldwide crisis. You know, just the final next step is that the school committee will need to revote its budget before town meeting. And we're going to have to meet, I think, in the next couple of weeks anyway, but just wanted to kind of make that point. Final point, I should have said this earlier. You know, one strategy that we could have taken, that most districts around the Commonwealth are taking, is to make broad brush, is to make, how do I say this? Is to make broad brush reduction in force layoffs to all non-professional status teachers or across all specialty areas. Someone, one of the parents talked about it. So there are districts who have sent out 100 layoff notices just to really hedge their bets. I don't mean to use that term in a derogatory way. I don't like that strategy. And you talk about a demoralizing exercise for, for a district, that is demoralizing. We decided to take a much more precise approach and build a, build the budget with precision, with precision and with thought. So as difficult as it is for the people who are impacted and for the programs that are impacted, it could have been, you know, in many ways, it would have been an easier exercise for us to just lay off 50 to 100 teachers. I just would tell you, I have no appetite or desire to do that. I think the most responsible thing to do is to, is to, is to do this exercise. Of course, it leads to probably more specific and more difficult conversations because you know who's impacted and what's impacted, such as Mandarin. But I just did want to put that out there. And, you know, maybe it's a, again, maybe people don't agree with that decision, but I just think it's the right thing to do for the Dexbury Public Schools. I know, I know this culture and I would not, I wouldn't want to do the alternative plan. So anyway, that, that's really all I have to say about it. I'd be glad, obviously glad to answer any questions, but that's where we are.
Any questions from school committee members?
No, I just want to say, I think John's been really thoughtful about this. I mean, it's not an exercise that any superintendent enjoys employing. And I applaud his optimism as well. So thank you, John.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So I just wanted to reiterate that it's not only the amount of money, it's also the timing of town meeting that are going to be key in enabling you to kind of walk back from the $1.2 million, or the cuts that you made in order to generate the $1.2 million reduction in the budget, right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, but, I mean, I don't want to open up a can of worms here, but again, it's, this is, even now, it's still a process, right? So, you know, I mean, I, I will, I will commit to, if you're interested, for me to, you know, we can take a look again at our priorities and go back to the drawing board. I don't want to make any promises. I do, I do, I do really stand by the, the decisions that we made, as difficult as they are. And again, it was a month, it was really a month-long process. So, but if, you know, if there's interest in us, you know, looking at alternatives, we can certainly do that. But I do need to get to that target, so.
Yeah, and you also need to get there sooner rather than later in order, you know, because if we aren't going to have to cut $1.2 million, if it's going to be less money, then some of those pink slips aren't going to be acted on, right?
Yeah.
Right.
I'm sorry, Julie, say that again.
So if we don't, if we were not required to cut $1.2 million out of the fiscal '21 budget, then those, those 20, the reduction of 17.4 FTE is not entirely required. Some of that could be recouped. But only if the teachers, teachers are still available, right? So the longer we wait, the more, to town meeting, to the point that you have certainty, the more difficult it is to, to get back to a smaller round of cuts and a more, or less of an impact on our students.
Yeah, yeah, Julie, actually, I'm so glad you asked that question because I really, I realize I'm sitting here, I think I should have made this much more clear. But, you know, just maybe this will help cool people's fears. But that $500,000 number, that lower amount, which is a more likely, I think a more likely scenario, that restores virtually all of these cuts. To get to, to get to that, it was a much easier exercise to get that, to that 500. We had things like the, the new vendor for the trash and recycling contract. We had the teacher turnover number. We did have a series of reduction in force, a series of layoffs that were, that were more due to enrollment than to a budget issue. So the pain, the pain is the gap between 500, or the big pain is 500 to 1.2. I don't want to minimize. I don't want to minimize a $500,000 cut, but I should have made that point earlier that it's much easier for us to get to that 500. I still don't like it. I mean, it eliminates the social work we just added likely, but it, it saves things like Mandarin. It saves cloth sizes and that type of thing.
Yeah. And so, Julia, am I okay to talk for a minute?
Yeah, yeah, you go ahead, and then I'll.
Great. Um, you know, and again, I want to, um, I want to commend the administration for doing what they felt was in the best interest of our students. But I want to just reinforce, it's, the community has put you in this position. And the community is engaged. There are a hundred and seven of us on this call. I made the point at that joint meeting a week ago, there wasn't a single town department that was impacted in the way the public schools were impacted in fiscal twenty. Every family recognizes there was a deficit starting on March thirteenth, or whatever the date is, that our kids didn't participate in normal school. All the rest of the departments went along with their regular business in fiscal twenty. So we're operating at a deficit. It's also kind of being unsaid that historically, the federal government and the state hasn't really provided the funding to support mandates that are provided to us to operate our schools. It is very likely our expenses are going up. There's not a person amongst us who doesn't think the schools are going to have more burdens. There's going to have a lot more responsibility. Is the state and the federal government going to make us whole? We, I don't think we can count on that. So we have a deficit with our students starting in March. Our teachers did a phenomenal job, but there are many people that are unsatisfied. And I think we just have to recognize it didn't work well for everyone and it didn't work as well as regular school for anyone. So our kids have a deficit. Our costs are increasing beyond normal. The starting point was substandard. It was worse in the last 10 years in terms of a year over year increase. And we're cutting from that, right? So the thing we talked about was a budget, was just the preliminary. So town meeting, someone can stand up to the floor and say, instead of 1.25 million coming from free cash and stabilization, it should be 1.75 million. Every one of you that are on that call have the ability to stand up at town meeting and make a case for this is not the right thing for our community. Put this onto the community. Step up, right? Don't criticize our administrators for making these very difficult choices. They're imperfect choices, but step up and try and provide the resources to allow our faculty and our staff to just do the job that we all believe they can do. So anyhow, I just want to remind people, our students are at a deficit. Police department, fire department, their fiscal twenty budget didn't really result in any impacts. It severely impacted our public schools. So anyhow, that's just a context, you know, so it's just really important. Everyone who's on this call, tell your friends, your neighbors, your children that are above eighteen years old. This is like same thing. If you want to make a difference, you have to vote. In the town of Duxbury, if you want to make a difference, volunteer on a committee and go to town meeting.
Thanks, Peter. Julie, would you mind if I answer a few questions that were in the chat?
Uh, yeah, go right ahead.
The budget related. One, I, one, one, one has a name of a teacher in there and I, I can't, I can't speak to personnel issues, but I just, it's about, I guess I would classify it as a difference. The question really is about reduction in forces versus non, non renewals. And there's a question in the Q and A about whether or not we would have made different decisions about Mandarin depending on the professional status, the status of the teacher there. And let me just see if I can say, say, let me think how to say this. I'd say our decisions that we put forward had nothing to do with whether or not a teacher had professional status or not. So I hope that answers your question. It is a technicality of how, of what the notice is, but our decisions were, were based on many factors, but it had nothing to do with the status of, of a teacher's tenure in the district. So I hope that helps. Second question is, did, did middle school, not in order, but did the middle school Mandarin program get impacted? And the answer is yes. The answer is yes. So this, this plan put forth does, does eliminate middle school as well. Again, very difficult decision, but thank you for asking. I shouldn't have made that clear. And there's also a question, not related to the budget per se, but someone had made the comment earlier, just about magic dragon. I'm just going to answer it here because, because the questions are up, but will magic dragon open in September? I, I can't give you a hundred percent. We're, we're, we're hoping that's going to happen. We're actually meeting next week to make a final plan for that. We do recognize how important it is for the community and we do think there's a pathway that's going to allow us to open. Even, even though there's going to be some pretty significant restrictions put in place, you know, from the state about, about daycare. But that is our, that is our goal and I can't handicap it, but I, I think it's going to happen. Pat and Danielle, is that, is that a fair answer?
It is, John.
Okay, thanks. Jump in if I mess up. And someone's asking here just about about getting the names of all the parents on this webinar. I, I wish I could help you with that. That has to be a little more grassroots effort on, on behalf of parents. I, I, I don't have that information and I can't really release contact information for, for parents. So I, it sounds like there's interest with people, you know, banding together and, and making some noise. And so I'd encourage you all to, to work together somehow in a grassroots effort to, to share contact information. So, all right, Julie, that's it for me on this agenda topic. I, I do see people have their hands raised. We're, we're not in a public comment time right now. So I'm going to ask that we kind of wait for that.
Yeah, we'll have an opportunity for a public comment at the end of the meeting after we go through our discussion items that you see on the agenda. So if you could hold on to your questions or your comments, until then, we'd be grateful and we'll try and we'll, we'll get to you at that point. Um, do you want, uh, we were going to talk about guidance from Desi about the school year, but we haven't really got much more to say than what was in your email.
Yeah, that, one of the reasons, um, we were really hoping that the guidance from the state would be released this week. I still think there's a possibility that it'll, it will be released by the end of the week, but, but even that, maybe not. I know I sort of alluded to this, at least in earlier comments during public comment, but I'm a little more optimistic by what I'm hearing at the state level about next year. It's, I think it's going to be brutal on a lot of different levels, but perhaps not as kind of draconian as some of the earlier trial balloons that they put out there. But I, I just, I, I'd be irresponsible of me to speculate even about that. So I think we're just going to have to wait and see.
Okay, I would, um, somebody during our previous public comment session said that they had been in contact with the consultation group at the state level around school reopening. And given that so much of the school reopening, the requirements and the terms upon which or under which schools can reopen are going to be determined by the state that if parents and community members are, have particular views, of course, we're happy to hear them here, but they will have most impact if you share your views with either your state representatives or with this consultation group on school reopening. So that, that, sharing your ideas at the state level at this point may actually move the needle as far as the types of things that schools are going to be required to do at the in September. And so it would be great to have, if, if you feel so inclined to just direct your commentary toward state people and, and we can maybe perhaps post the, the links to say Josh Cutler or, or a consultation group.
Yeah, I think the, I think that in my personal opinion, I, I think the best, yeah, let me think about that, actually. I, I think the best person probably is the commissioner of education at this point. Jeff, Jeff Riley.
But if we could perhaps post that link or, or contact details on the, on the DPS website, then that people, if they want to communicate, can do so easily. And that may, you know, I know that there are people who are concerned about face masks and other details. And so it would be productive to, to share your views around those items to the state, because they're going to be in control of a lot of that.
Yeah. So I will tell you this. You know, people's input is, is paying off. So I'm on, um, I serve on the executive committee for the Mass Association of School Superintendent's. I was actually on it for nine years. And by my term ended and I, I just got, I just got reelected out of the South Shore group. So I'm, I'm back on this, this committee and we had a meeting actually last Saturday with the commissioner. And he, he's hearing from people, you know, and really two, two main points I'll make is that he's heard loud and clear from families around the Commonwealth about how difficult it's going to be for working parents to work if kids are at home, right? I mean, and that is, he said that was a loud and clear message from many, many different interest groups. And so I think that's, I think that's helping guide some of their decisions. And then things like masks, he is hearing a lot from a lot of different people about masks. You know, he didn't make any, any kind of promises, but I, I do hope that there is you know, more flexibility around masks maybe than we originally hoped. I, I really have no idea. But he certainly spoke to the fact that, that that was a, a concern, you know, concern for a lot of people. So anyway, for what it's worth, as much as I'm disappointed that we don't have kind of our marching orders at this time of the year. I think they've been very thoughtful and they're being methodical about developing guidance for people. They know they have to get it right. You know, they have one chance to get it right. And so, and they're also, by the way, taking their, they're getting their guidance from public health officials and the governor's office. And so it's a really, talking about not wanting to be in people's shoes. It's a really challenging situation right now for them, but they're listening, they're listening. So I'd be glad to share the contact information, but they are hearing from folks. So anyway, for what it's worth.
Great, thank you. Okay, Dr. Klingerman, you have some information for us about summer planning?
Yes, I do. Are you able to see my presentation right now?
Yes.
And I do have to preface this by saying, I know it was a question earlier in the meeting. I am not going to be speaking tonight about special education, summer school programs. And so if families have questions or concerns about that, I know some of those discussions occurred at team meetings over the past few months. And if there's any questions about that, that should be directed to our director of special education, Heather Tucker. This is more a curriculum update in general. So I'm going to talk about a different variety of topics on each slide. So the first thing I wanted to share was that we have established a number of working groups in the administrative team that also have faculty members. We are going to be adding parents as we have more guidance, hopefully some students. But each of the working groups has a different area of potential fall scenarios that we are considering and planning for right now. And so the curriculum and instruction working group is what I lead. And with that, our group has identified six action items that we needed to kind of get started on even before the guidance, because we aren't going to have time to do all of this once the guidance, guidance begins. So the action items we identified were student summer skill maintenance, curriculum work, resources for hybrid learning, professional development for teachers, students and parents, a calendar adjustment, which we'll get into a little bit on the action items, and a remote learning plan development. So I'll talk briefly about those things on this slide. So our first action item was the recommendation for summer learning enrichment options to assist students with skill maintenance. And so we sent a letter out to families on Monday in the last principal correspondence of the school year. And as all of the curriculum leaders in the district, we felt strongly that we know remote learning has taken a toll on many families. It's been extremely hard to serve as the teachers and as parents and try to balance jobs and multiple students and all sharing a Wi-Fi network. So we know how challenging that was. However, we just think in the environment that we just went through from March to June, we'd be remiss if we weren't recommending that students really work hard this summer to not take two months off from learning because of the situation we just left. So with that, we've provided elementary calendars where students are able to complete enrichment work and skill maintenance work across content areas so that they can come back to school as prepared as possible. We don't want the gaps to widen any further than they need to. And at the grade six to 12, we do have required summer reading in English and those lists went out as well as enrichment opportunities for the students to participate in across content areas, including some AP work that we would say is pretty essential for students to be tackling over the summer. So we wanted to make sure that parents had adequate resources to continue summer learning. And if there's any families that need help with that, or they're wondering how they're going to fit that in, we would just ask that you reach out to us because we have some students that are in the National Honor Society who have service hours. And we, we can be creative with families that need extra support there. But we really encourage our, our students to keep learning this summer and at the very least to keep reading and to keep up with their math fluency, because math is really highly at risk in this type of environment to have skill deterioration, which we don't want to see. We had to make the assumption that we will be in some kind of hybrid learning environment in the fall. And I feel like we just need to be prepared to be able to jump into a remote learning environment in the future at a moment's notice, much like we experienced March thirteenth. And so we don't want to not be prepared for that. So this summer, all of our curriculum supervisors will be overseeing the work that some of our teachers will be doing over the summer, looking at our curriculum maps and making sure that we are able to meet the learning standards in either a hybrid or an in-person environment. So what can we do would be to create a blended learning approach. And I just put a little information about blended learning on this slide. Blended learning weaves various instructional mediums into a cohesive whole. So that means that we want to be creating personalized learning paths for students that are both on virtual online programs that we are looking into right now. And we want to maximize our in-person time with students as much as possible. So how can we better do, how can we better get the curriculum across, knowing that we may not have all the students in front of us? We want to be prepared to have our curriculum work either in in-person or a virtual or, or a combination of both. So that's going to be some hours spent. We want to make sure that when the students are before us, that we have some pre-unit assessments to give to students that will let us know how the students are prepared for the upcoming unit or lessons that are coming in. We don't want to have, we don't want to repeat student, lessons for students that they may have already covered during remote learning, but we can't make the assumption that everything was mastered during that remote learning environment. So we're going to be working on some assessments so that we can determine who knows what. In each course, we're talking kindergarten through grade 12. And if there's some gaps that need to be filled, we'll do that on the spot by being really great at differentiating instruction, more so than we ever have before, because differentiation is not new. However, I, we're, we're facing learning gaps, potential learning gaps of students in every content area. So we want to be prepared for that. We've also been working hard during remote learning to identify resources that have worked really well for us in a hybrid learning model that is allowing students to have effective instruction at home. Just an example of that would be our Lexia program, which is a reading comprehension program, a phonetic approach. We typically use that as an intervention for students who are at risk with some learning difficulties. But because they made that free during remote learning, the number of our teachers use that for the whole class to enable them to personalize learning for the students at their reading level. So we're looking at resources like that that worked really well while we were remote in the spring. And then with all of the changes that we're facing potentially for the fall, we know that there's professional development that is needed for our teachers that we did not have the opportunity to provide before we were really thrown into this remote learning environment. So we've certainly been providing as much professional development as possible. We shared that we have a remote learning center that our students, our teachers have been accessing. And we have literally thousands of webinars, learning tasks, Google certified educator certifications. The teachers and the teaching assistants, nurses and administrative assistants have been working hard on their own professional development during this closure, on top of everything else that they've been doing to maintain their jobs. But there's still more professional development needed. And so we are going to be presenting to you tonight a calendar adjustment, adjustment that would allow us to have. that would allow us to have our teachers return to school for that typical August 31st, I believe, convocation day. And we would like to keep the teachers that whole week for professional development, to really have a bootcamp of just a week of professional development offering so that our teachers and staff are well-prepared to be able to tackle whatever the fall may look like and to be able to be as effective as possible during whatever hybrid or in-person or a remote learning experience we may be facing next year. So we'll be talking about that a little bit later, but we'd like to have the teachers and staff return for that whole first week before Labor Day. And unfortunately, we have a very late Labor Day in 2020. So we'd like the students to be prepared to come back to school that Tuesday after Labor Day, rather than the Wednesday, the previous Wednesday. So when we talk about the calendar, I can expand on that as needed. So our next slide, I mentioned, let's see if I can get those things to go away. What develop, what professional development do our staff need to be set up for success in a hybrid environment? These are just a few of the topics that we have identified. We certainly have curriculum adaptations that will be worked on over the summer by small groups of teachers. But in the fall, when the teachers return as a larger group, those curriculum adaptations need to be discussed and planned for to the larger group. So we typically have a, a small group of teachers do the work over the summer and then they share that out with the larger group of teachers once everyone is back. That will take some time. We, we know we will have health and safety protocols that will be different next fall. And we need a chance to be able to talk to our staff about what that will look like, what the expectations will be for them, just so that we have everyone well-prepared to make sure that everyone is in a safe environment and we're all using the same, the same plan for what that will look like. We have several learning management systems that we use in our district. So six to 12 families are used to the School G platform. We also had great success at the Chandler School with CSO. And Google Classroom is something that we've used at Alden and in other places. But the teachers, again, these are new and they may have had a very brief introduction to some of these. And we want the teachers to be able to use all the components of these programs most effectively if the students are not able to be with us in person. We also have a number of curriculum programs that we've used in district. For example, Envision Math or Elevate Science, Young Citizens is a social studies program. We may have used bits and pieces of the online learning component because we've had the luxury of always having students before us. And so now real online components of these programs, where the teachers may not have ever been trained to know everything that's in those online components. There's opportunities for assessment, independent student work for content and videos. And so there's so much to the programs that we would love for some of the experts from those companies to be able to say, you've only used the tip of the iceberg for this online component in math. And we may be able to better support students in a hybrid environment. We also have a number of, um, Albert is a secondary program that is a great resource, including AP resources and the College Board. And so we're not using these consistently across courses. We want to make sure all the teachers are well-versed in these programs. I mentioned earlier, we have some new academic tools that personalize learning for students at whatever the level they're, they're on. And we haven't mandated the, the use of these programs across grade levels. But in the fall, we would be expecting all teachers to perhaps be using Lexia as a hybrid learning resource. Freckle is another great resource across content areas at elementary. IXL is math, Reading Eggs is Chandler School, Ames Web, Fluency Go React is a world language tool. But again, for consistency's sake, we need to provide the teachers with a training, with training opportunities so that they can use these resources effectively. We also know that we need to enhance synchronous instruction. We've heard that loud and clear from families. And we know that, um. We, we definitely need to provide enhanced video opportunities for our teachers if they wanted to be able to screencast or do some live instruction. And all of these programs are new to some and others maybe are a little bit more comfortable, but we need to do an extensive training on these synchronous tools. Um, also creation tools for students, including slides and flipgrid. We know we need to provide training on best practices for differentiation in a hybrid environment. We've never really taught teachers how you can do a second grade reading group virtually when you have a group of students before you. But we'd like to be able to really talk about what that looks like. And we'd also like to be able to talk about what it looks like at the secondary level if we are in a hybrid environment, when you're trying to meet the needs of students of all levels in your classroom. And we know that we need to work on empowering engaging students in a hybrid or remote setting. So those are all, that would be the miracle of that week of, the last week of August, first week of September, for us to be able to provide a robust training opportunities for our staff. I'm going to switch gears a little bit here. I just wanted to share with all of you that we had our first annual colloquium last week for our new teachers. We had about 23 new teachers last week, last year. And the new teacher induction program extends for the whole school year, where our new teachers are working with a mentor throughout the year. Last summer, we revamped the entire program. We, we wanted to make sure we had an SEL or Social and Emotional Learning Focus for our new staff members. We thought it was a great opportunity to share with new, new teachers to Duxbury how important it is that we meet the social and emotional learning needs of our students. So we selected an anchor text that's social emotional learning in the classroom. It's a big thick red book and we worked out of it all year. So with our new revamp, we selected mentor coordinators that were currently teachers from each school. And so we had Amy Burns from Chandler, we had Denise Lamar from Alden School. And then Caitlin Sheehan and Martha North served as the secondary mentor coordinators. And they facilitated monthly meetings for the new teachers using that social emotional learning in the classroom book, as well as other important topics that come up for new staff members, such as conducting parent conferences, the expectations for grading in Duxbury, and just kind of the behind the scenes of how things work and what to expect month by month. And so last week, the colloquium, if you have a chance, if you haven't already looked at the slide deck, if you click on that link, you'll see the presentation that the new teachers put forth last week. But each new teacher presented five slides on their takeaways for social emotional learning in the classroom this year. And they reflected for the group, did a wonderful job presenting their biggest reflections of how the school closure impacted, how they completed social emotional learning tasks and included that into their practices. And they did a really wonderful job. So I wanted to share that presentation with all of you, if you have a chance to look through that. That would be great. My last slide is just to address, it was mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, how seriously we take anti-racism, equity, implicit bias and cultural competence in our school district. And we had plans in our strategic plan, as well as professional development, well before the current situations have, have come up. But we wanted to make sure that the community, as well as our school committee, knows some things that we have in place right now and have been planning to do. So as we have developed that remote learning center that I've spoken of a couple of times that is accessed by our Duxbury staff, we've added sections on anti-racist and cultural competence. There's many webinars, workshops and resources that are currently happening on a daily basis. And we know that we have staff members that have been attending to those trainings and are really serious about wanting to incorporate this topic into their classrooms and into our school district. So definitely we have a great outcry from the staff of what can we do to support this initiative? We are having a summer faculty book group where we'll be reading White Fragility, why it's so hard for white people to talk about race, as well as how to be an anti-racist. So we had a number of staff members that said they'd love to participate in that group this summer and start to have some of these conversations about how we can make sure that we're enforcing the anti-racist message in Duxbury. We have a number of staff members, again, who feel very strongly about this topic and have expressed an interest in creating a task force for the district, looking at these issues and raising awareness and having just a conversation about what we can do to take, take this very seriously as we have. And then we're also working on, we had been already working to bring the ADL, the Anti-Defamation League and other consultants that are experts in this area for staff training and identifying implicit biases and creating a culture where racism is not tolerated. So if we were to move our five full day professional development days to that first week of school, it would limit a little bit some of our full day professional development. But we can be creative with making sure we still have time for professional development topics throughout the year on the half days that we have, as well as we can offer after school and evening, webinars and courses for teachers to take. But we wanted to share as a district, just that we have these things in place because we think it's an important conversation. And so those were my slides and I know they covered a lot. So if there's any questions about the curriculum work that we'll be doing over the summer, the professional development needs, if there's any, any suggestions that you have through conversations you've had about remote learning and what we can do better as a school district, we, we're open to that. As I said, I just wanted to share with you that we have a robust mentoring and second year teacher course requirement for our new staff members that people work really hard at. And then I ended with that anti-racism note. So that's all from me.
Danielle.
Yeah.
This is Matt. Can I make a, a comment and a suggestion?
Absolutely.
So this, this relates to the, um, to the stuff you talked about with regard to hybrid learning, blended learning and remote learning. So I would suggest that we encourage, um, the district to take a sort of a broad look at all the different learning solutions that are currently in use throughout all of the schools and see if there are ways to better integrate them and make them more tightly interconnected. I mean, one of the things that, you know, sort of I'm noticing, we've got a lot of different tools and different platforms. Most of them require different sign-ons, different authentications. And some, or I would say most of the tools that I'm looking at on your professional development needs slides, a lot of them have, um, tools for LTI integration and single sign-on. And I, I think it would cut a lot of the, um, sort of the, um, the, the, the overhead work on, not only on the, the, the student side and the parent's side to sort of keep everybody organized, but I'd actually think it'd have a positive trailing effect for the teachers as well. So that they're not like trying to put up a bunch of different links on Google Classroom and other stuff that people need to, people need to keep track of. So I think the professional development is great and figuring out ways to adapt the curriculum and do the blended learning is wonderful. I would just recommend concurrently with that in a separate swim lane, we just try to figure out how to better make a lot of these tools integrate more closely together, because I'm almost sure that they can.
Thank you for saying that, Matt. And that's been a huge source of frustration for the teachers and for the students, and I'm sure the parents. We've been working with Clever throughout the spring. We, we wanted to get that program available and in place prior to the closure. We've been working with them for the whole school year. But at the elementary level, Clever is a program that many of these resources integrate with, where it would be a single sign-on for families to be able to have their student go to one place, log in and be able to pick whatever their assigned tool that's hanging on. So certainly aware of that and working actively to have that happen. We're going to be rostering over the summer, which is a huge task, getting all of the student lists into the, from these programs into Clever. But that's something that's underway. So thank you.
Sure.
Danielle, you and I had an inter, uh, email interchange about anti-racism and what school committee might, might be doing. And, um, we have, uh, all sorts of data about how different groups of students, uh, either perform on standardized tests or how they see themselves within the school environment in terms of their, say, uh, educational wellbeing. And so I suggested to, that as a school committee, we might have an annual conversation about, we pull together all this information from disparate sources. What does it tell us about different student groups? And, and how are, how they kind of sit within the school community, how they feel about their school experience? And so I'd like to, you and I talked about it, but I think I'd like to have, have us as a school committee consider putting that on our kind of annual, uh, school committee agenda as a, as a way to review how the school district is doing in that regard.
Great, I, I agree. And I think that, um, we'll definitely be looking to do that at school committee and also within our school improvement plans. So I think you'll see that theme throughout the year next year. So hopefully we have multiple opportunities for conversation and being able to share out with the community what, how things are happening there.
Great, thank you.
Danielle, I just, um, I was thrilled that we have this anti-racism, that you put this slide in that, in that there is a focus on it. Because I've lived in Duxbury for 19 years and, and you know, I'll, I'll know I'm pretty candid. And, uh, we have a racism prob, problem here. There are students who have been belittled, towed to go home, um, various different races. So it's real. Right now, the entire country is in crisis. So it's come to the forefront. But we are a community that can learn more and hopefully, um, bring that to our students, um, which we, the schools have tried over the years. And we've had various incidences still occur. So, um, it's upsetting, but I'm glad that everyone's focused right now is to just increase the education around racism. Um, and I also want to sort of piggyback that on, um, the SROs in the police department. And I just, I, our student resource officers have been absolutely incredible and helpful with our students and supportive and amazing. Our Duxbury Police Department is really focused on mental health and assisting our community in any way that they can. So I know in the bigger world, there's been a lot of dialogue about police and SROs and racism and a lot of different factors right now. And people have, um, their temperatures are quite high about a lot of different things. But I just want to kind of give a shout out to our SRO and our Duxbury Police Department, as well as recognizing, I think we have, um, some pockets of, um, or areas of racism that could be worked on in our community. So I, I love this slide and I'm thrilled. So thank you, Danielle.
Thank you. There's one more quick thing I wanted to mention. Matt reminded me of it. When we talk about professional development, we also understand that there's a, a learning curve for families in terms of some of the resources. And if we are facing any kind of hybrid learning next year, we had discussed in our working group, having professional development for, for parents on any of these tools and just being really familiar with how to access student work in School G if you're at the secondary level. Or really being comfortable with Google Classroom if you're an Alden parent. And so we're anticipating that open houses might look a little different in the fall in that I don't know if we'll be able to have them in person or virtually or what that will look like. But we want to provide training for any families that need help with this new, new world of school that we find ourselves in. So that's also part of our professional development plan, is improving the resources we have for families to be able to access and assist students at home.
That's a great idea.
Okay, I'm going to stop sharing.
What I, sorry, this is Shannon. And I apologize because I probably will have to background wise. I just wanted to follow up, Danielle, thank you very much. There's some good stuff that you guys are doing. And I love the last point about helping parents on all this stuff. That's been one of my personal challenges. I wanted to follow up on one of the questions from public comment about special education and specifically with regards to training and how to support, um, our kids in one of these different types of environments. And, you know, we all know that it's going to look different in person as well. So just wondering, you know, what kind of additional help we're giving those faculty and staff in that area?
In terms of, um, working and differentiating instruction for students on IEPs specifically, is that your question, Shannon?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, more broadly, you know, how, how are we working with the kids who need one-on-ones? How is that going to?
Yeah.
I, I know it's all specific to individuals, et cetera.
Right.
But I think there was a question in public comment, I think we should address that.
Yep, and I think that, um, if there was one specific topic that just makes us panic when you hear that we're suddenly moving into remote learning, it's special education. Um, I'm a former special education teacher and I just think that, um, it, we need to have our kids in school with us and it's such a scary proposition, even to think about what we've gone through. I think next year, no matter what happens with state guidance, we're going to be able to provide a much more structured school day for students. And that's something that we'll be working closely with the Duxbury Teachers Association to make sure happens. And so I think that we did the best we could in a crisis situation to be able to provide students with individual instruction. But I'm hoping we have a little more flexibility with having students with us in person, prioritizing which groups of students are able to be in the school if that's limited, because we know we can't do justice to service to. justice to service delivery, especially for students in sub separate or students who are receiving really extensive IEPs if we're trying to do that remotely. So I think these all go hand in hand and we know we need to do as much as we can to support our students. And that's something that we'll be working on over the summer. And we're really counting on the guidance in that area from the state. And so we haven't really done any action items on that because that's one. We had to be prepared for the extended school year for our students who qualify for summer services. And again, we're doing the best we can with limited guidance there. But that's definitely a summer task that Heather Tucker and her department will be working very closely together with us to try to make sure that we have a comprehensive plan in place. And you just reminded me of something else that I forgot. One of the action items, I don't have the display up right now. We had heard from the community that they were looking for a concrete remote learning plan and philosophy from the school district. And that is something that we'll be putting together over the summer of what does hybrid or remote learning mean to us? And once we have the guidance for the state, we'll be able to put that document together. So if families have questions, they should be able to see what does Duxbury Schools believe? How are they implementing this? The hybrid learning or whatever the state guidance shares, what does special education services look like and so forth. So that remote learning plan will be a document that we'll be working all summer on. So it's not looking like a very restful summer break because we have huge amounts of work and planning that needs to be ready to go by August so that we can share all of this with families at the beginning of the month so that they can know what to expect in the fall. So just know that that definitely, that special education piece, the 504s and our English learners are definitely at risk populations that we need to make sure that we have a robust plan in place for them to be serviced and their needs met in the fall.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Klingman. And then the next item on our agenda is the superintendent's goals.
Well, Julia.
Do you want to defer that for? Yeah.
That's good. So just given the time, if that's okay.
No, that's no problem. So we have, we have the, your comments and your, your written
Yeah.
thing. So we could just, if we could all review that before our next meeting, then we can have our conversation then. That's all right. So the action item we need to cover is what Dr. Klingman mentioned, which is the change in the proposed change in the school calendar. So it was the current school calendar and then the proposed changed calendar was in the folder, Google folder. Dr. Anjunji, do you want to briefly?
I'm sorry. Yeah, let me, let me put this up. Just give me a minute. I'm just going to share my screen. Okay. So Danielle, Danielle already spoke, spoke to this during her presentation. But we think there's great value in giving the teachers time for training and professional development the first week back, especially given that we think we're going to be in some form of a hybrid environment next year. Again, time, time's going to tell on that, but we're pretty sure, you know, even if we're not in a remote or hybrid environment, we need to be prepared to instantly pivot to a remote environment. And that's, you know, that's what I'm hearing from the state is like, you know, the, until we get a vaccine or until there's a cure or whatever it might be, schools need to be prepared for multiple scenarios, you know, for the foreseeable future. So we think there's great value in those five days. So this calendar has Danielle said, takes all the, it takes the three full day professional development days that we normally have scattered throughout the school year and put some right in that first week. So can you see my cursor? I don't know.
Yeah.
Right here. So teachers would come back. Monday, August 31st, they'd spend five days in training and professional development. Monday is, is Labor Day. And so in this calendar, students would return September 8th. Now it feels like a late start. But because we're taking those three days of full day PD out of the, the body of the calendar, they'll get out at the same time they would have gotten out in the original calendar. That, that makes sense, I hope. So we didn't extend this calendar. In fact, we kept the, the same end date, which in theory is next June 16th. That's the same end date it was, that was in the original calendar. And the only other small change I want to point out is one of our full day PD days next year, we scheduled on Tuesday, November 3rd, which is the presidential election. The idea being that we just wanted to minimize traffic around the, the voting site, which is at the steel building. So I, I don't think we can afford to give up a day. So what we, what we have on paper here is a virtual learning day. So kids would in theory, still have a full school day and be virtual. And we assumed that because we're probably be in some kind of virtual environment anyway, that that would be an allowable day. Cause you know, we talked about lizard bags in the past and all that, which I find, by the way, to be a really humorous conversation now, right? So six months ago, they told us we couldn't do virtual learning for, on snow days. Yeah, we just been out of school for three months. So I, I'm not sure what the future of snow days is going to be in the, in the Commonwealth. But so anyway, so that's, that's November 3rd. So we still think we can accommodate the needs of the town and their desire to kind of minimize traffic at the steel, but still have a school day. So that's it. I mean, that's our proposal. Again, we just, we think it's really valuable for us to have that concentrated time at the beginning of the year with our staff. So love to hear your thoughts, but we'd, we'd recommend, we'd recommend you consider it.
Right. Any, anybody want to chime in?
I just, I think it makes total sense. Yeah. So I'm, I'm supportive of that. I always, it's been a divided issue, but I always have liked the after Labor Day start. So this accomplishes two things. Concentrate the PD, but then also not have Labor Day weekend be a homework weekend.
Yeah. Yeah. It's also possible, but again, it's sort of a, we're waiting on so many, so much information, but it is possible that the state will actually change the 180 day requirement next year. So that could, that could even change our calendar again. And again, the idea behind that would be to give, to make sure teachers have appropriate time for, for, for training and PD. So we'll have to see, but we, we like this, we like this model. No matter what.
Any other thoughts from school committee?
I think it makes perfect sense. I echo Peter's thoughts and I love going out to Labor Day.
Yeah, I think front loading the train makes perfect sense.
I agree.
Good. Thank you. Credit, by the way, credit to Danielle for, for the idea. So great work credits do there. No surprise.
So could I have a motion then to approve the revision to the 2020, 2021 school calendar, please?
So moved.
Second.
No, second.
Okay. All in favor and I'll do a roll call. So Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Shannon?
Hi.
And Julia? Yes. Right. So we're all set for that. Now we have our second period of public comment. So once again, I'd ask you to, to go into the participants. Image at the bottom of your screen and use the raise hand function if you'd like to comment and we would be happy to hear from you as before.
Okay. So Mrs. Kildea has her hand up again.
Thank you. Can you hear me this time?
Yes.
Okay, great. I just want to express my disappointment. I think this was a real missed opportunity to talk about summer services, which are due to start in two and a half weeks. And I think this is a school issue. It's not a small department issue. And to leave parents on the hook like this, when we have over, I forget how many participants you said on the phone. This is a real missed opportunity and I feel like this is indicative of a lack of communication from the special ed department as to what the plans are, what the contingency plans are, and how parents can envision summer learning for children that need it. What a missed opportunity.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Jayden, Jayden Chi.
Jayden, when you want to speak, just unmute yourself.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yes.
Hi. So I'd just like to take a minute to thank you so much for spending so much time hearing our thoughts about the budget and the department and the cuts to the Mandarin program. I think we all understand that with such a strange time and the pandemic that some cuts are necessary and there are things that aren't going to go exactly the way we want it. But you, Dr. Anjunji, sorry, is that correct? Um, Mr. Anjunji, you said that our teacher, Ms. Chong, telling us about the non renewal of her contract was unexpected. And we, we were text, we were all texting together during the meeting. And we also have agreed that she probably shouldn't have told us so early, but I think it was also really important that she did. Otherwise we wouldn't have known. Um, it was a direct result of that, that we went in search of this meeting. That we sent the link around. I was in contact with a younger student and he asked me for more information. And I think that's a big part of how, the reason that there are so many people here today. And I also agree that it's really important for us all to participate in these meetings. But I have to point out that most of us here have no idea when these meetings are happening or how we can be involved in them. And I think someone mentioned that the age to vote on these issues is 18. And all the students here, except for maybe one or two are we know how we can sort of make a difference in these issues. So if anyone could speak on that, it would be really appreciated.
So Jayden, I can tell you straight off the bat that the town hall website has a, has a facility where you can sign up to receive notice of town committee meetings. They'll send you an email and say that there's a board of selectmen meeting or a school committee meeting and give you the link to the agenda. And so that might be a useful tool for you and your colleagues if they want to follow along. Our meetings are also posted on the school website. Our meeting calendar is on the Duxbury Public Schools website. So you'll see the whole year's worth of meeting dates, which of course was thrown into confusion when we had to go online. But, but nonetheless, through both of those methods, through the town hall email service or through the school department website, you can keep track of when our meetings are. On the second point you made, the fact that you're not 18 and are not registered to vote is, is really not an obstacle or shouldn't be a barrier to you coming and speaking to school committee. We do want to hear from students and we would, our, our main mission is to serve the best interests of students. So when we don't hear from students, we may be missing something valuable. So I encourage you to participate.
I just want to say one thing to the, I can't really speak about individual teachers, but I will say no one did anything wrong whatsoever. You know, this week it just, when I say unexpected, it's just that we had, you know, we hadn't yet had a full kind of full context budget discussion, but no one did anything wrong. And I, and I'm actually thrilled to see people here advocating for it. And the teacher that you're referring to is wonderful and she is inspirational and she's done a phenomenal job with this program. So I just want to make that super clear. It complicated things just a little bit. But we love, we love the fact that you guys, that you're all here. So I appreciate those comments.
Yeah. Thank you for saying that. That really means a lot to us. Yeah. And then I guess the only other thing I wanted to say is that it's really hard for us to kind of attend these meetings because even this one, I didn't even expect that it would go so long. I was expecting maybe like an hour, but we got two and a half hours and maybe that's a result of so many people being here, but especially during the school year. Personally, I'm on the crew team. I'm a coxswain. So I get home during the season at four, 5:30 and that's if I have nothing else. I have music in the evenings. I teach lessons. So it's really hard to sort of make time to attend meetings for a single subject if if it, especially if it's very, very long. So I'd also like to point out that that may be a reason why there's limited participation.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah. Well, it is long tonight. It is long tonight because of public comment, but ironically, but we do try to have the meetings are usually about 90 minutes. They, they usually started at six o'clock and go to about 7:30. Jen, I do want to say that you do have student rep, do we typically have student representatives at our meetings? It's been kind of funny since the closure. It's been difficult for them, but every year we have two student representatives. So anytime there's an issue that impacts students in particular. You know, Mr. Donovan next year will communicate to the student party who those members are. I don't know yet who it's going to be next year. This year was Jess Mari and Tanner Campbell. So anyway, there's a lot of different ways to advocate and to stay involved and we'll make sure that we bring kids in as much as possible. We, we love the fact that you're here tonight.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thanks. Shane Festa.
Hi, I'm Shane. I'm back again. After listening for, what was it? Like the two, two hours? I returned with a couple of questions. I was wondering in Dr. Anjunji's slides, there was a small point made at the bottom of one of them. It was, it said it required, or to the effect of requiring students to fulfill the language path at DHS. For students who are knee deep in the Mandarin program, like sophomores or like rising sophomores, rising juniors, rising seniors, will they be offered any sort of ability to take an independent study in the event everything, like we, the program collapses and there's no teacher for the 2020, 2021 school year?
Yeah, Shane, we don't have sort of a absolute yes, but we, we, we are talking about, again, hope it doesn't come to that, but whether it's an online opportunity or an independent study, you know, we know, we know that it's important for you guys to finish that, that pathway. So yeah, there will be discussions forthcoming about that, but certainly it's a very, a very high priority for us. But again, again, I am, I'm an eternal optimist. Hopefully it doesn't come to that, but if it does, we'll make sure we get you guys over the finish line.
Okay. Thank you. I do have a few more questions. I was wondering who should our parents or a student's contact to maybe even push for an online town meeting to have it earlier than like right on the cusp of the incoming school year. And as we've spoken about earlier, you know, having like difficulties hiring teachers, as you said, Dr. Anjunji, just like roll the dice on potentially not having teachers return could be like really detrimental to some programs at Duxbury High School. So yeah.
Yeah, Shane, good question. I'm not sure if it's even legal in Massachusetts and a lot of towns are in the same situation we are, but the best person you could speak to about that, and he's a great guy, is, is our town administrator. His name is Rainey Reed, R E N E Reed, R E A D. His email would be on the, on the town website. He actually offered to come to this meeting tonight and he's a great supporter of the school department and you know, would love to hear from you if you're interested. So that, that'd be my recommendation.
Awesome. Thank you so much. And I do have, I have two more questions. Going forward in the future, will there be more school meetings like this on Zoom? Like for the foreseeable future?
Yeah.
For the, for the, in the immediate short term, yes, yes.
Okay. And my last one is just out of pure curiosity. What is the breakdown of the language teaching staff, like foreign language teaching staff at Duxbury High School?
Shane, I do not have that off the top of my head. I'd have to share that with you offline. I could, if you want to send me an email tomorrow, I can, I can drop your note. Does that sound good?
Sounds awesome. Thank you so much.
Okay, please reach out.
All right.
Are there any other people with comment?
Two more hands. Courtney Burns is next.
Hi, this is Lauren Burns, Courtney Burns's daughter. Hope you're doing well. I really liked listening into the meeting tonight. I am also a Mandarin student. So yeah, I really liked hearing what you guys had say on it. It was definitely good to shed some light on the fact that it's not all cut and dry as it may seem to us, you know. Before the meeting, all we knew was that it could be cut. And then obviously we were upset, but it was good to hear the layers of the situation and understand the position that you guys are in, which I know cannot be easy. I noticed a lot how you spoke on racism tonight, which is huge. And I thought it was awesome what you were saying. There are so many races to be recognized. And I'm not saying that by cutting the Mandarin program at all, that would be you guys doing anything in that direction. But I'm just saying that the emphasis there should be on cultural awareness. You know, it's not just black and white. There are so many other races to be recognized. So with, with the ideas of cultural awareness and the emphasis of that in our school system, it might be worth considering to make cuts to other programs instead of any language program, because those are all expanding on the cultural awareness in Duxbury, which I'm sure we all know is limited in such a predominantly white town. And then I also would like to point out that Mr. Antonucci, you said that the goal here is to affect the least amount of students as possible, which is the clearly most logical way to approach the situation. So by, by cutting one Mandarin teacher, it's true that like the numbers aren't as big in the Mandarin department as they are in, say, the Spanish, the French. So it would affect less students. However, by cutting one teacher in other programs, the, the students will still be able to have those classes. They might be bigger. They might lack one teacher. And I'm sure cutting any teacher is always just a very hard decision to make. But the students will still get the class. Whereas with, with cutting a all those students lose the class entirely. So I'm not sure if by cutting the program, you really are not affecting as possible.
Great. Yeah, great point, Lauren.
Thank you for your time tonight. And thank you for everything you guys said. It was, it's great to know that our concerns are being recognized. And it's good to know that we have such good people working on the committee. Thank you.
Great job.
Thanks very much.
Looks like the last hand is from the Bston family.
Hi, this is Liz Bston again. And I just wanted to, again, reiterate everybody's comments. It was really helpful to get a lot of information from me tonight to better understand the situation around which particular departments had cuts. And I also wanted to ask, and this is my lack of knowledge of what the school committee does, whether the school committee will be presenting a proposal to use funds to cover this budget shortfall, or that's not really your job at the town meeting to do that?
It's really, that decision is with Board of Selectmen, supported by advice from Finance Committee and the Town Manager and the Town Finance Director. So the, we try to work closely with them, but ultimately we, we don't influence the decisions about the use of free cash or stabilization funds. But, but as Peter quickly mentioned earlier, all those people are very responsive to the interest of voters, because ultimately everything has to be voted at town meeting. So people who are concerned about the allocation of funds to the schools should definitely voice their concerns or share their concerns with Finance Committee and with the Board of Selectmen, because that will influence how municipal funds are allocated across departments, including the schools. Does that, does that help?
That definitely helps. Thank you very much.
Okay, Julia, that's it.
Okay, great. Well, I wanted to thank everybody who's participated and, and spoken. And thank you for sharing your views with us. And I'm sorry that it's so late, but, but there's been a lot of good discussion. So could I have a motion to adjourn our meeting, please?
So moved.
Second.
Great. So all in favor? Matt?
Yes.
Peter?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Julia? Aye. Okay. So we're all set. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, everybody.